Thank you for coming to the November 21st School Committee meeting. And the first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, a few of our colleagues have other commitments this evening, but welcome to our meeting. And the first order of business is the Walpole High School Student Report. So Darcy, the floor is yours.
Good evening. While sports have come to a close, with the exception of the football team, as they face Waymouth Thanksgiving Day at Turco Field at 10:00 a.m. Impact Testing has been held this week for any winter athletes that have yet to complete it. If anybody has questions, feel free to contact Amanda. And also, winter sports registration closes next Wednesday, so to be sure to get all your paperwork in. Tonight is the first night of parent-teacher conferences. The second session will be held Monday, November 25th, from 4:00 to 6:30. The Period 5 International Relations Class organized a boys versus girls varsity soccer game to help raise money for the organization Rock Haiti. They raised almost $500 with this event, and it will go to benefit organizing soccer and youth programs to help in Haiti. The Community Service Club has been hosting a food drive to benefit the Greater Boston Food Bank. This is a competition between homerooms, and the homeroom that collects the most donations will be awarded breakfast. The French Club will be going to Aqua Chain at Legacy Place on Friday, December 6th, to enjoy a French meal and holiday shopping. Any students that have paid their activity fee is welcome to join. This past Sunday, the debate team competed at Lexington High. Lindsay Navick won four out of five rounds qualifying for a spot in the CEATs tournament, as well as Aiden Levinson, who won three out of five rounds in the novice division. Congratulations. The Photography Club is running an annual photo contest. You can submit any black and white photos that you have taken to @walpolehs__photography on Instagram for a chance to win a $25 Pizzeria Grande gift card if submitted by December 10. Seniors, check the yearbook Google Classroom page to complete the senior survey that is due December 1st, and submit any candid pictures throughout the year to personalize the yearbook. The November Pride Goal at the high school is to demonstrate integrity with both students and teachers around the high school community. In addition, next Wednesday, November 27th, is a half-day, and on this day is our annual Pride Day. During this day, students will be able to participate in activities such as music trips, dodgeball, board games, or ornament making, and attend a school-wide pep rally. To sign up for the sessions, please complete the sign-up sent out by Ms. Toby. Also, on November 27th, will be the junior versus senior girls' Powder Puff Game. This will take place directly after school at Turco Field. Permission slips are on Ms. Max's door. Lastly, this Sunday, Best Buddies will be having a Friendsgiving at the high school, where members will enjoy pizza, desserts, games, and crafts. Thank you.
Great job, Darcy. There's always so much going on.
Yes, it's a very busy time with all the holidays, but really fun at the high school.
I like when there are students in the audience, though, because they can hear about some of the things that they have ahead of them. So you did a nice job tonight.
Thank you.
That's great. And our next order of business is to recognize the students that are here this evening. So Dr. Goff, do you want to introduce?
Sure. So we have the Girl Scouts here, and the Bronze Award is actually the highest award that a junior Girl Scout can earn between grades four and five. And I know that you have a little bit of a description about this, but I do not want to steal their thunder.
Right.
So I'll let them get up and talk about their award, you know, what they did in order for our Girl Scout Troop 69046. I know that they focused on a school-related issue, and the work that went into that, and you know, what came out of it.
You know what, we'll take a picture in a moment, but if you want to tell us a little bit about what you did, if you speak into that microphone over there, we have a TV audience, and the people who are at home will be able to hear you.
Hi. So, to earn our Bronze Award, we made a video about kindness and ways to show kindness in schools and outside of school. And so it took a lot of work, hours and hours and hours of work. Yeah.
So another thing that we did is we made a buddy bench for Fisher School, and it was dedicated to Mrs. Duggan, who was our, the most recent principal, who just retired. And that is now sitting in the younger kid playground.
We also made a kindness video to spread kindness throughout our school, and it presented kind ways to show and what not to do. So we showed kindness and how it really affects people in everyday life, and we hope that it works throughout our school system this year, too. Even though it showed last year, I think the students that were there last year will continue on that kindness to other people, which is really nice. And then, also, our Bronze Award is, as you guys already said, the highest award that the Girl Scouts could receive at a junior level, and we're hoping to do that next year or the year after that for our Silver Award. Thank you.
Something else that we did for the Bronze Award is that we went to Cradle to Crayons, and we, all of us donated some clothes, and we helped them with, like, the organization and for kids that might need clothes and stuff like that. We organized them and to make them, like, outfits and stuff like that for them.
Something else we did was we colored and painted rocks, and we wrote kindness sayings on them, and we were going to put them around, and we were going to put them around different areas in the town to represent kindness.
So, we've been talking about the video, but we haven't explained what it was, so...
The video was a video that showed ways of kindness and ways that weren't kind by, like, let's say, an everyday thing, like, somebody walks through the hallway, and then they drop their books because somebody bumped into them, and then another person would help them up, showing kindness to everybody. We had a few, like, funny parts in there so that people could be entertained through it all, and make sure that we still had our audience's attention, because sometimes, we know that, as former students of Fisher School, that sometimes if we had a video that was boring, it would just drag on and on, so we tried to make sure it was fun for everyone, but also we wanted to make sure it presented kindness in a way that would actually affect our school.
So, we decided to make it a game show called Kindness Matters, and we had, like, a host and contestants, and then we would act out little skits, and it would cut to. Actually, Mrs. Wolf helped us a lot with that. But yeah, so that was really fun doing.
And about the kindness rocks, when we painted them and wrote, like, nice little messages on them, so the Daisy Girl Scouts, or the Brownie Girl Scouts, they came to us, and we kind of explained to them how kindness was important. We taught them how to make the kindness rocks, so they would be able to, you know, get, like, be kind, too.
So also for the kindness rocks, the day of, we also read a story to them that, it's called... Well, it was a book, it was a book that we read to them that based off on kindness. It's called Each Kindness.
The one with the bowl and the pebble and the water? I don't know.
The bowl and the pebble and the water, we got it.
And it showed kindness, and we read that story because we read, we all read that a few weeks before, well, at least most of us did, and we thought it was a really nice story, and it would show kindness, so we decided to read that to the Brownies, too. And it was really fun to do that with them, because we knew that younger Girl Scouts would also be spreading kindness to others throughout their entire life, probably.
Along with the video to also show kindness in our school, we put sticky notes on the lockers, so like, when the kids came in, they would, like, read a happy note and make their day better.
That's great. We already have a question up here from Dr. Goff.
Well, thank you for all of that hard work, and really taking a look at that project and bringing it into the school system, becoming, I think, what you had talked about in terms of kindness ambassadors, and really demonstrating empathy and respect to other people, and just awareness of how other people can feel, so I commend you for that. My question is the video, if people wanted to view this video, now hearing about it, where can they go on a certain website to be able to find it?
I can put it on the Fisher, I can put it on the Fisher website, but I can also tweet it out, and then...
Mrs. Mortally can help with that.
Tweet the link.
Great, because I think people would love to watch it. Thank you.
That's great. Girls, stay up here, because we'll take, you can take a picture.
And Jen, you wanted to hand up?
I also, they get certificates from the Girl Scouts of Eastern Massachusetts, so I'm, and they also get a Bronze pin. So the girls worked really hard. It was over 20 hours in order to earn the Bronze Award, and so they gave up recess time in order to do this, and I think it's really amazing what they pulled up, so it's very kind of us.
You girls did a beautiful job of explaining everything, but if your troop leader would like to say anything more, they did a great job explaining things already, Jen, but it's your chance, if you want it.
I just want to commend them. So we actually have 13 girls that earned their Bronze Award, and I'm really proud of our troop, because at this age, you know, it's tough to be able to express yourself in front of your peers, and so these girls gave up recess time in order to work with Mrs. Wolf, and they really embraced what it meant to be kindness ambassadors, and I hope that they'll take this message with them going forward in their entire life. And so, and then the new Girl Scouts that are rising up to their level, hopefully will remember what this troop did and carry it forward. So, thank you.
If you all want to stand in front here, I have a feeling the parents might want to take a picture or two. Maybe you could make two lines or one long line, whichever you think is better.
I also wanted to say thank you, ladies, for being such good role models at Fisher School last year, and for spreading the word to a younger troop. My daughter was part of the troop that you guys mentored, and I know that they all really appreciated your hard work and, you know, spreading the kindness message, so good job, everybody.
Yeah, I would just like to, I would just like to add, I was very impressed with how you spoke and you supported each other in such a mature way, you know? If something needed to get added, you just quietly suggested a suggestion, and you worked really well as a group together, and I don't think you could have picked a nicer topic to concentrate on, because kids listen to other kids in a way that they don't always listen to adults. So the fact that you chose to talk to them about kindness is, it's a super important thing that you did, so thank you for that. Are there any other people that have any comments? And thank you very much for coming. You're welcome to spend the whole rest of the evening with us, but you're not required to. So thank you very much. Our next item will be the Director of Digital Learning and the Digital Learning Coaches, which Ann Arben probably never thought we would have, a room full of coaches, but look at us now.
True, but what a tough act to follow. That is so impressive, these kids who are up here without notes. I'm going to read a bit, because I'm not quite as good as they are, I guess, with presentation. It was amazing, just amazing. And so glad that they also, through Mrs. Wolf, with her help, incorporated some of the important, you know, digital components to their project.
Exactly.
That enables that project to spread further than it could without it, so, well, I'm very happy, we're all very happy to be here tonight to showcase our digital learning coaches and their, the coaching model that we're using, and the activities that support student learning. So our work is grounded in our digital literacy vision, which we developed back in 2016. I'll share it again for everybody's, as a refresher. Through continued and evolving access to digital resources, students are empowered to personalize their learning, to master essential content and 21st century skills, both in and outside the classroom. Through the transformative use of technology, Walpole Public Schools creates an interconnected educational community to actively explore and design solutions to real-world matters. Perfect example that we just saw of the concept there. The International Society for Technology and Education has been a worldwide beacon for guiding administrators and educators on transforming student learning experiences through developing standards. Today's students must be prepared to thrive in a constantly evolving technological landscape. The ISTI standards for students are designed to empower students' voice and ensure that student learning is a student-driven process. Our coaches are the change agents to empower teachers to create these student-centered learning environments. Coaches inspire educators and leaders to use technology to create equitable and ongoing access to high-quality learning. We all understand that technology reflects an ever-changing landscape of devices and their capabilities, and the tools and the products that are available. For secondary level, the impact of these changes is shared at the upper middle level. For elementary, all teachers are impacted each year as new frameworks are introduced. Coaches provide the support and resources to navigate through this continuous cycle of change. Tonight's presentation by our digital learning coaches will focus on each of the coaching standards and activities that support teacher and student agency. I'll first introduce Dave Cuzzi, who'll come up and showcase the Data-Driven Decision Maker Standard.
Welcome, Dave.
Thank you. I like to always start with just a little side story that Ann and I, about 12 years ago, wrote, and Bridger remembers this, we wrote a grant for a paperless classroom to the Walpole Computer Foundation at the time, and the feedback we got was, one of the people wrote that, they could never, ever see that happening in Walpole. So I just find it funny that now we have, you know, six people here that are dedicated to technology in the school, where we were trying to do that 12 years ago. So it's just a little side story that I always think is funny to tell. So, we're obviously a data-driven society, and one of the things that teachers always are looking for is a way to get data to use that really helps them with their instruction. One of the things that we did this year was, the math coaches had come to me midway through the year, and they talked about a way of making our summer math more informative, more helpful, how can they get, other than just kids getting right or wrong? Because it's very hard to put all that information together from all those kids, so we did a little research, and we came up with a program called Edge Elastic. And what Edge Elastic allowed us to do was now, other than just knowing if a kid was right or wrong, we know what strands they got wrong. We know where, what computational problems they had, they struggled in, where we needed to improve maybe teaching in the middle schools. So it gave us a really good, now we have that data, now we have something, we have, instead of right or wrong, we now have data to use in specific targeted areas. So now, that's a way for us to get data that we would have never gotten before. One of the other things we use is Google Forms. Google Forms is a really quick, easy way for teachers to get data on things they're doing instantaneously. It gives them, you know, an exit ticket. You teach a kid, you teach a student a topic, you want to know whether they're getting it, ask a question as they leave a class, whereas we used to give them papers, and we had the old, you know, you'd stand at the door, you'd collect all the papers for the kids, and you'd spend the night looking at it, whereas now, I look at the Google Form, and I can see, okay, they got this, they didn't get that, and it's instantaneous, and I can, you know, I can change my, what I need to teach the next day. So now, instead of giving me something that would take me a couple of days to implement, I now can, as a teacher, I can now take that information and put it into play the next day, so it's changing the way I teach. Another thing that I helped institute with Mr. Hans' help, actually, at the middle schools, and it's kind of tripled down to the elementary schools, and it's in the high school now, is PairDeck. And PairDeck gives us, as teachers, instant feedback. It's an interactive slide presentation where I'm teaching the students a topic, they're interacting with the slides, I can see what they're doing real-time, and if I'm asking them a question, and they're not getting it, I can stop, reteach it, then reassess them, and then move on to something else. So now, instead of, again, something that would take me days to figure out whether the kids were getting it, I now figure out real-time, I can adjust my teaching practice, get the kids to master the topic, and then move on, where I was normally just guessing, or the old, how many kids understand what's going on, and they raise their hands. It also gives that student that doesn't want to raise their hand, I can now see if that student's struggling, and they don't need to raise their hand, and I can pull them aside separately and say, hey, I saw that you were struggling with this, why don't we meet, and we'll talk about it, whereas they don't kind of get embarrassed to raise their hand or not. So those are three things that we use to kind of drive data, to give teachers that real-time data to help inform their instruction. Any questions on that stuff?
Questions for Dave? So far, so good.
I'm just making a note of PairDeck, because I might want to use it in my class that I teach, so, thank you for that.
They're going to be at EdCamp, so...
Hi, Karen Wolf, I'm the digital learning coach at Fisher, year 26 in Walpole.
Yay, yay!
So I'm here to talk about coaches as collaborators. Coaches establish productive relationships with educators in order to improve instructional practices and learning outcomes. We encourage educators to explore new instructional strategies. We partner with educators to evaluate the effectiveness of digital learning content and tools to inform procurement decisions. We personalize support for educators by planning and modeling the effective use of technology to improve student learning. So just some of the pictures, I just showed some of the ways in which we are collaborating, we do at team meetings, we have after-school, professional development, sometimes we'll use a whole staff meeting to do a workshop, and also just appointments. So sometimes teams will come to me, or a couple people, or maybe just one person. And so that's just some of the ways that we collaborate.
Great.
Hello, I'm Jed Stefanoits.
Welcome.
26 years, congratulations. For me, it's been, I would approximate 59 days. But thank you for the warm welcome, and thank you to my team for the warm welcome, too. I'm Jed Stefanoits. I taught third grade for 22 years in NADIC, and then I began my work as a digital learning coach two years before coming over here to join the team. I'm thrilled to be part of the team, to be in one building all day long. It's great, it's exactly what I've been looking for. And I'm really excited to talk about digital citizenship, too. At every level, we all see it, as parents, as teachers, as learners ourselves. As the parent of 16, 18, and 20-year-old, it's been really interesting to watch the conversation about digital citizenship as it's evolved from being safe-searching and protecting passwords, to now looking at curating digital footprints, and managing social media, and cyberbullying, and all of the real-life things that are happening instantaneously and accelerating very rapidly. We all see it. As digital learning coaches, we're now at the point, with the amount of technology and the amount of ed tech in our schools and in our classrooms, where technology is a tool in our classrooms, not a time, right? It's not a set time for technology, it's a tool within reach, in pockets, on cards. And what's great, the bottom corner quote there, that gives us the opportunity, the coach's role is to really shift the conversation from the products to the practices. So it's not about operating devices, it's not about training kids how to use computers, it's really about using devices, using technology, whether it's assistive technology, or laptops, or iPads, to transform the way we're teaching and learning. And looking at ISTI standards, the coaching standards guide us, but look, what we use to guide our work is the standards for educators and the standards for students. And what's nice about both of those orbits up there is they're very similar, and they're similar in the way that it's all about what we want educators and we want students to be, not what we want them to do. Nowhere does it mention the tools to do them with. The goal of all these standards, and the goal of the ISTI frameworks, is to really think about transforming the way we're teaching, and the way kids are becoming empowered to make their learning visible, and to use the tools to make an impact in society. And that's where the digital citizenship component comes into. One project that we are going to be launching imminently is a chance, imminently, is a chance to speak to that empowerment. So across third grade, Walpole students are going to be embarking on this Digital Learner Badge Book, and what it is, it's based on the student standards. So working with teachers and students, kind of combining all of our standards together, students will each receive one of these booklets, and it's kind of passport style, but it's their responsibility to say, I know I'm an empowered learner, and they explain that, I know I'm a digital citizen, because, and then they cite their evidence. So we say, just like, you know, our job is to collect evidence to show how we do our job, students can collect their evidence to show how to do their job. And then as they, you know, whether it's on their own, in the media center, or at home, they show us that evidence, they earn their sticker, and that's the Digital Learner logo down there, and then at the end, they can earn their pin, because as we saw with Girl Scouts, there's nothing like getting a pin. So the Digital Learner Badge Book is a very analog book on purpose, it's not a digital badge program, it's a digital learning program that uses a badge system. So, thank you very much, I appreciate the fun and the warm welcome to Walpole.
Great, thank you.
How tough an act to follow!
I'm like one of those shy outgoing types, so I, you know, I will use my notes, too. I'm Nancy Carroll, I'm the... Um, I'm Nancy Carroll, I'm the Digital Learning Coach at Boydin Elementary and I would like to share that this is my 30th year teaching in the Walpole Public Schools.
Yay.
Probably serving them. And prior, and, you know, long ago, I was a student, um, of the Walpole Public Schools too, so, you know, I can attest to the wonderful education that we've received here. Like to talk about being connected learners. And as coaches, we're consistently, uh, we consistently model, as Jed mentioned, the ISTI standards for students and the ISTI standards for educators. And all the while identifying ways to improve our own coaching practice. Being connected learners, we expand our own boundaries beyond the classroom walls and thereby we're expanding the boundaries of our teachers and our students. This connectedness gives us a, um, wider access to new perspectives, to new information, new technologies and innovations in pedagogy in which, um, that directly gets transferred, again, back to the staff and back to the students. Some of the ways that we are connected, um, we attend conferences or often we're presenting at conferences. And some of the conferences that we have attended, um, recently and in the past is MasQ, which is the Mass Computer Using Educators, a very big conference, um, where we make all kinds of connections, the EdTech Teacher Conference where we just returned, um, we spent two days there honing our coaching practice. Design Your Own Learning Day in Medfield is a popular, um, conference for, that we like to attend. The ISTI Conference we have been to in the past. Um, we've also attended Assistant Tech Assistive Technology Conference of New England, which was held in Rhode Island. The Foxborough Institute for Learning and, um, the Digital Citizenship Symposium. And there are so many other conferences that we attend and it sounds like we don't spend time in our schools, but we actually do. We take the information that we get from these conferences and we bring them back to our staff and we work with our staff to improve their practices as well. And that directly gets transferred right back to the students. It helps us deepen our expertise. So for example, we went to MasQ and, um, I sat in a session, it was about presenting professional development. And I took a couple of the strategies that they had given and used them the very next day with my staff. And then those, the, some of the strategies that I used, the, the staff went the following week and used it with their own students. So we, you know, we're using some, I'm not gonna name the tools or whatever because it isn't about that, but it was about taking that, those strategies and working with our staff and then bringing it to our students. And it's, you know, very impactful, very meaningful. Um, a connected learner continues to grow their PLN or their professional, uh, and personal learning network. And it keeps us current, it keeps us innovative. And some of the ways that we do that are through special interest groups, through MasQ, and a special interest group is where you're, you're getting together with like-minded people. So we might get together with, uh, digital learning coaches at an elementary level or at a middle school level. We also pair ourselves with the Education Collaborative or TEC. Social media groups on Twitter and Facebook and Instagram have professional groups out there. So it's not, we're just, you know, traveling through. We're on professional chats and we're, we're on a Facebook page that's private for specific tools. And there we learn, um, we get new ideas or they help us troubleshoot, they, you know, answer our questions right away. They're sharing their best pa- practices, they're wide open to it. And that's, you know, being a connected learner, you're wide open to these learning opportunities in which we take that and go back to our, um, to our colleagues. We, um, write blogs, we read blogs, we read other educational, you know, we, uh, subscribe to educational subscriptions. And then we have shared goals and that's part of being a connected learner and a connected educator. We have shared goals. So we have that shared, um, goal with the district, our strategic plan goal, and with our building principles and with our own team, we have, um, shared goals. And oftentimes, our colleagues, our staff, ask us to help them with their goal that becomes part of their evaluation. And so, um, I guess I would like to end with a quote, uh, by, that might explain, uh, why we strive to be connected learners. And it's from Helen Keller and it says, um, alone we can do so little, but together we can do so much. And that's what we try to do for our staff and colleagues, so.
Great. Any questions for Nancy?
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Oh, sorry.
Hello, my name is Kim Farley and I am the Digital Learning Coach over at the Elm Street School. I'm in my 16th year here in Walpole. It's gone by really fast. I started out at the old Post Road School as a special education teacher and then I've been at the Elm Street School for 11 years where I was a fifth grade teacher. So this is my first year as the Digital Learning Coach over at Elm and, uh, it's been a pleasure to be part of this amazing team. Um, I'm here to talk to you about, um, the work that we've done as a team to model and support our teachers, um, by designing interactive student experiences using digital tools. We have, um, become learning designers essentially, where we've been collaborating with the classroom teachers, um, to develop student experiences that are being transformed through the use of digital tools. We continue to, uh, develop activities that integrate digital tools that we currently have in the system, um, that are part of the Google Suites, like Google Classroom and Google Docs and Google Slides and Google Draw. These are programs that most teachers know about and they understand how to use, but they may not know exactly how it can extend, um, student learning and to use it as optimally as it can, as they can. So, um, we have been working with them to use these tools to help promote student learning and engagement. And, um, these are two examples of some of the ways we've been using them. There are so many, it's hard to kind of choose just two, but, um, the one on the left is a program called Padlet. Uh, it's a free program that we started using at Elm. Our grades three through five have grade-level padlets. They're essentially interactive, uh, discussion boards online where the students have been using them to create book commercials. Uh, they do this during their reading workshop time, they do this, uh, during their visits to the library for book checkout. And they create, uh, a script and essentially a 30-second video that they put up about a book that they've currently read that they enjoyed. And this has been extremely helpful, uh, especially for those readers that get stuck and they don't know what book they wanna read next. Um, they have access to this padlet through their Google Classroom page and they can take a look at a, at a video that one of their classmates in their grade has read and enjoyed and hopefully, um, they enjoy it as well. Um, another, uh, uh, program we've been using is Google Slides to create interactive and digital notebooks. Um, the one on the right is actually an example of a student in Ms. Spinello's second-grade class who is using it. Um, Ms. Spinello, uh, pushes this out through her Google Classroom page and, uh, each student has their own copy of the interactive digital notebook. And she posts questions about the novels that they're reading in their small groups and they're responding to their quest, her questions on there. The great thing about this feature is that Ms. Spinello can comment and provide student feedback right on their interactive notebook and the students can reply back to her. So it can happen in real time during class when she's monitoring them, um, or it can happen when she has a planning period, she can quickly jump on and, um, take a look at their student work and provide feedback, um, right away for those students. Um, so just actually today, I was in her classroom and a, a second grader said, uh, wow, this is so much fun, it's like playing a video game. And, you know, anytime you can have a student express so much joy and fun in reading and writing, um, that's really stretching their minds, uh, is, is a success in my, in my view. So, um, but th- these are just two of the many examples that we see going on in the classrooms. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions for Kim? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
Uh, I'm BJ Bark, I'm the Digital Learning Coach at Johnson. And I am 15, 59 days into my teaching career. This is my third career. I was in, um, software and then I was a tech sports specialist at Johnson and now I'm the Digital Learning Coach. And I, um, appreciate the school system taking a chance on me and, uh, let me work in this position, I, I love it. Um, so I'm gonna talk about why we are, um, as coaches, we're providing, um, and evaluating the impact of professional learning for educators to use technology to advance teaching and And the couple examples I have up there, we do a lot of one-on-one PD with teachers, um, but it doesn't really just stop there, it's not like a one and done deal where we just sit down and teach them something and, and then walk away. We sort of, um, guide them and support them and sometimes it's year after year, we're working with them on the same, um, project. So on the left, it's, I was working with Allison even before I took this role with her grade eight public speaking class. And, um, this was a class where she would have students write motivational speeches and they would stand up and deliver. I should probably take that class. And, so that was, the kids would just deliver the speeches to their classmates and then the next year we took it and she, we were videotaping the kids and just, you know, just like you might be videotaping me up here. Um, now they're standing in front of a green screen and they're dropping in a backdrop so it looks like they're in the role that they're taking on as a doctor or a lawyer or a teacher sometimes. Um, but we've also applied more technology where we are now using a teleprompter, I don't know if you can see in the picture where the kids are holding up an iPad that's actually a teleprompter. So the students, instead of like looking at their piece of paper, they're actually delivering a speech and it's, they're really amazing, um, and we have videos, we could post a link and share it with you guys, you could see some of that. So that's one way with the one-on-one, um, professional development that we work with teachers. EdCamp is coming up in January, it's gonna be our fourth, fourth time running the EdCamp. Um, and this is a participant-driven event, we try to have feedback from teachers as to what they want to learn about, um, as well as bringing in some, um, outside speakers on topics that are, um, pressing for teachers, social emotional learning topics, topics on anxiety, um, but then we ask the teachers themselves what kind of workshops they wanna host, facilitate, need, um, at that, at that event. We had our meeting today and the event is gonna be in January. And then a lot of us are doing, the elementary schools are now doing embedded PD days instead of their PL, in their PLC time where they're working grade by grade on different, uh, technology tools or resources, um, during that time in the school day with them, so. That's it.
That's great. Thanks BJ.
So that, those, uh, six digital learning coaches represent the elementary and the middle school. And at the high school, um, some of you may recall that we, we participated in the Fuse program during the first cohort offered through Highlander Institute in collaboration with the Tech Collaborative. And, uh, we're now, um, just starting the second cohort, which means that we have two Fuse fellows coming to the high school, uh, Mark Carlfield, who's a Millis High English teacher, and Catherine Brummett from Hopkinton Middle School, she teaches media arts. They are coming and they present to us, um, a, a program to infuse, um, strategies, resources and, um, mo- uh, different classroom models, uh, to support blended and personalized learning and culturally, culturally responsive teaching practices. Um, the design team, um, includes, um, high school teachers, administrators, and we had a tremendous turnout of students, um, during this as well. Typically, the week, it was, the last year there was two, um, on the design team and this year we had six, six of the students, so it was really, um, impactful. So, um, the first exercise was we shadowed, uh, all, all the members of the design team, shadowed a student for the, uh, half a day. Again, a, a, a very impactful experience for all of us to be able to live the world of the student, going from class to class and seeing and experiencing what they, what they do on a daily basis, so. Uh, so our Fuse fellows will work with, uh, uh, six early adopter teachers, so one per department essentially, throughout the next 12 months, um, discovering strategies for their, for their, um, classroom. And then, um, we also have sent a Fuse fellow from our high school, Mrs. Debbie Jordan, who's our library media specialist, and she has been paired with Westwood High School along with another Fuse fellow there. So at the end of all of this, she will, um, come back, you know, in her role and, um, have the, the toolkit, um, that will, um, benefit all of the, um, uh, high school staff on a more permanent basis. Um, the growth of our, um, early adopter teachers from the first cohort and now this second cohort will then again build, build that capacity, um, even further. So, that concludes our presentation, we're certainly happy to answer any questions you may have. I'm so very proud of this team. They're really, um, it's been a fantastic experience having the team grow so that they can devote the time in one building. So we do truly appreciate the support of the school committee and the district to, um, to grow the program. Um, I think the impact is, is extremely positive and, um, we're very, very, very grateful. Our last slide is, technology is never gonna replace great teachers, but in the hands of great teachers, it really is transformational.
It's a great way to end it. It's a great way. Are there questions for Ann or for anybody? Dr. Goff?
More of a comment, thank you. Um, great presentation. Ju- just to reiterate, you know, that, that whole shift to practice that you mentioned, um, what you mentioned about transformational and stu- that student-centered teaching and that collaboration, really helping to improve teaching and learning. I mean, it's so critical and you can see it. What I've seen in the classrooms, I know I've, I've seen Karen, Nancy and Kim just, just doing walkthroughs, the rest of you I'm sure I'll get to, but to see what the children are doing and how you're in there supporting the teachers, whether it's leading the class or watching them and helping, helping to support and what they're able to do compared to even a few years ago, i- it's really, it's, it's transformative and it's really interacting that teaching and learning. And when you look at the elementary classrooms and, and we look at the literacy programs that we're doing and what they're able to do in order to support and to, to push forward with that literacy program is absolutely amazing. David Barner, when I, when I was at OPR and we had, we had walked by to see, you know, your area Jed, um, it's amazing, you know, in terms of the transformation. And, uh, David Barner told, told me a story that, um, while he was working with some students in there, a teacher, a fourth grader walked by and, and David just happened to be behind him, he didn't know, the fourth grader didn't know. And the fourth grader had just, you know, was gazing into the window because now you can see, and he said out loud, he didn't think there was anybody, man, I wish I could be in there right now. Just, just really look, it's, it's that, that engagement piece, so, um, you know, really thank you for, for your hard work and efforts and, and I can only imagine what, you know, our stu- students will continue to be able to do. And I know that hopefully we'll ha- um, have students in it the next time and I think this is a great overview. And then now being able to hear from the students about, um, how they're applying their learning related to these standards, so my hat's off to you, thank you.
Before you leave, and I don't mean to put you on the spot at all, Darcy, but I love the fact that you stayed. And as, as a representative of the student body, do, I, I'm sure there are pieces of this that you feel like, wow, I didn't get to, a chance to experience this as a student, but how do you feel you, how, how do you feel we're doing with integrating technology? And do you feel like you are prepared to move on from high school? And it's okay if you don't really have too much to say.
No, no, I have been thinking about it like through this presentation. I feel like my grade was kind of on a weird like cusp of like starting to try to integrate technology. Like I remember, I think it was like my sophomore year, I tested like a different standardized math Like I remember, I think it was like my sophomore year, I tested like a different standardized math test, like on the computer and like just things like that, like having new testing on computers and like new, different programs. But, so I think we kind of were like the end of more like paper type programs in school. And really in elementary school, we just had like KidPicks and like those were like the programs that we used. But now like I, I've like coached like a youth cheer like teams for the past three years. And when they talk about like the things they do in school and stuff, it's definitely so much more like technology, like learning from a younger age. Like we use Google Slides, I mean, like Google Forms and stuff in high school. So it's kind of crazy to think that they're learning how to do that in elementary school now. And I think they'll definitely be like, definitely better than me with using technology by the time they're a senior in high school. So I think it's great what they're doing.
Thank you. Thanks for sharing that. It's interesting, when I was thinking about it from my own students, my own children's perspective, they were all in their twenties now. And I remember being at Fisher School when you were the media specialist there, Ann. And there were parents who were saying, "That internet thing. My kids are never going to be on that because it's dangerous." And, you know, the, the fact that even then, we knew that you had to teach kids how to be responsible. But we've come a long way in terms of, you know, like hearing Darcy's perspective and going, going back that far. But it's great to have, have the people that are good and enthusiastic about it. I mean, you guys bring a lot, a lot of joy to the job, which has to help. And I would guess that many of our teachers are far less reluctant than they would be if they didn't have some support in the building.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely. We all need support when trying something new and that, I think it really is key. And it's a safe environment, just like exactly what we do with our children. We provide that safe environment for our teachers, that no judgment, you know? We didn't grow up with this either, you know? There are a lot of new things that, that keep coming up that, you know, and the pace of that has accelerated rapidly. So it's, it's tough to be in a classroom, you know, with new tools thrown at you that you may not quite know how to best utilize. And that is, that is what the coaches are doing, is providing that gateway for them.
That's great. Any other questions or comments for the team? Well, thank you very much for coming this evening. And welcome to those of you that are new. So that gets us to the middle school coaches. We've been patiently waiting this evening, so thank you very much. Dr. Goff, do you have any?
Yes, and we have Joe Masterson and Julie. We actually had Graham on here, but it's now Chen, so congratulations. And they're present tonight to update and discuss the middle school math program.
It's Dr. Goff and Graham. Of course. Yeah? So we need, we need digital and I can't do the help with that. BJ and Dave, now that your presentation's over, you could sing a little song for us during the, during the downtime.
I'm not singing, it's a loss.
Oh, you just want us to beg you now, huh?
I want you to have, but it didn't.
I'll sing step by step if I do the choreography.
This is the wifi here compared to.
Good. Here we go. There we go. Way to go.
Yeah. Hey, you could spend an hour and a half with that, huh?
So as Dr. Goff mentioned, we're just looking to offer you an update on the happenings in math at the middle school level. We've picked out what we feel are some important pieces to share some information with you. The first one, I know you've heard a little bit about this from the high school, but we wanted to elaborate a little bit more because we're using it at a more in-depth level. We have a new program called iReady. It serves as a diagnostic tool for us. All of our students, grade six through eight, are taking the diagnostic assessment that measures their overall abilities in math three times, so September, January and June. And then in addition to that, students that we work with in our math lab classes have access to an instructional component that offers them the chance to work at their skill level and to hopefully make progress on areas where they may have gaps or they may be behind a little bit with certain skills. Our teachers have access to the data for all of their students to gauge where their students are at. And they can match that with what they're teaching at that particular time. And we use it to monitor student progress to make sure that we're offering the necessary interventions for students who may be struggling and that we're providing what they need within their math instruction. So some ways that we use this in terms of data. This is the breakdown for a particular student and it shows they're overall just a little bit below where they should be. Approaching grade seven, so this is an example of a seventh grade student. So overall, they're just a little bit behind. One of their skills is at grade level. Two of them are just slightly below. And then there's one area of weakness, which is really what's keeping them from being where they need to be. So that would be the focus area for that particular student. What teachers are able to see with that in response to that student is a breakdown of what strengths that student has within a particular strand, as well as options for resources and next steps that would benefit that student based on their skill level. And if you clicked on individual skills within that, it has resources for teachers that they can access. This is what comes at the end of those resources. Teachers can do some reteaching. It offers resources for them for reteaching. And at the end, it gives some ideas as to if a student is doing this incorrectly, what can you do in response, which I really like for especially our special education teachers who may not be math content specialists and may not know exactly the right way to respond to a misconception that a student has. This really breaks it down nicely for them to give them a sense of, all right, this student's struggling with this particular skill. Here's what I can do to help them to make progress and make gains with their understanding. In terms of what we do as coaches, this is one of our screens that we look at quite frequently. This is the monitor piece for our students as they work through the instructional component. And it shows us where they're starting and the progress that they're making as they're going along with that green section being our ultimate goal. The way that iReady does it is that it starts them in the strand or the domain that's their greatest weakness. And as they catch up closer and closer with that, it'll shift so that it's always working on the area of greatest need for that particular student. It shows us their rate of passing, how much time they spend on task. And more importantly, we can look at an even greater breakdown to see areas where they may still be struggling even if they are passing. You know, in this particular student's case, they didn't pass a particular topic, partly possibly because they spent less than 20 minutes on the instructional piece for it. But I can see that and then respond to that going forward and encourage them to spend a little more time, sit with them, work through some of the concepts with them. And if they don't pass a second time, it actually will alert me if I, you know, to make sure that something is being done to ensure that that student has an understanding before they let them move on within that strand.
Okay, so one of the other areas that we are working on is we've been analyzing some of the MCAS data to try and help teachers improve instruction. Not only are we looking at certain skills that students are missing, but we're looking at specific types of questions. So for example, I pulled a question that covers eighth grade standards where students are taught the Pythagorean theorem. So if you're not familiar with it, it's used in right triangles to find a missing or an unknown side. And so this question was from 2019. There's been similar questions asked in 2017, 2018 with similar scores. Seventy-six percent of our students answered this question correctly. So, but this question is pretty straightforward. Like the topic, the first sentence says the length of one side of a right triangle. They're specific, they have the box drawn at the vertex. So that, that usually alerts the student, okay, right triangle, I'm going to the Pythagorean theorem. So what we've noticed is when it comes to a more in-depth application of the skills is where they start to struggle. So this was a question in 2018 where only 34% of the students got this question right. It's actually the same skill that needs to be applied. However, they're only drawing a segment. They wanted the students to fill in, draw a vertical line and horizontal line to make a right triangle of their own and then apply the Pythagorean theorem. So last year we worked a lot in eighth grade. I was actually one of the eighth grade teachers, I was not the math coach. So we worked a lot on making sure, not only we were just doing Pythagorean theorem questions, but how we were connecting it to the coordinate plane. You know, we tend to give a lot of questions that are the same. You know, here's a triangle, find A, find B. Or we give that application problem that's like the one that says, you know, you lean a ladder against the house. Everybody's seen that question and then they can draw the triangle. But now this is setting up, setting them up more for what they'll be doing in high school when they get involved with the distance formula, because it's the same thing. So we worked a lot on this last year and we saw some progress in the classroom. However, that did not help us in 2019 because they changed the diagram. So while they started to do a lot better with learning to draw their own triangle, now this past year they gave them a triangle, not a right triangle. You can still do the same thing by drawing it. And so only 28% of the kids got this right. And so this would be one of the solutions. Like you could actually draw three right triangles off that and find the length of each side. So they had to know to create right triangles, right.
And keep in mind too, like the piece that we had talked about with this is, you know, yes, this is a skill that we can show them in the classroom, but it's getting them to take it off the screen because they're doing this on a computer too. So that having to pull this image off a screen to do that with it.
Right. So they're provided graph paper, but then they still have to transfer it. So not only do they have to know to make the right triangle, then they had to know which triangle to choose. So it's obviously the one in green. That's the one that would give you the solution for the distance of TU. So this is an area that we know that students struggle with and we have to kind of work more at applying the skill. Because they're getting the basic, you know, 76% is pretty good. I mean, could be a little better, but it's pretty good. They're getting the concrete, but it's the application when the skill is not explicitly stated, like it's a right triangle. So how we're planning on doing this is we talked a lot about making sure we're working a lot on problem solving this year. And a little bit different than, you know, your typical, you do 18 questions on the page and you have the two word problems at the end. More in-depth, I have two examples to show you. So we started by creating a database of challenging word problems that teachers can use with their classrooms, in their classes throughout the year. We pulled this from like a math contest that's done online. It's an international contest, it's been around for years. It's actually changed hands. I think now it's Cassio that does it. But it's been, it was at University of Mississippi at one point in Columbus State. So the teachers have been working collaboratively, collaboratively during PLC to solve these problems. I had a teacher say to me recently, we were looking at some like high school questions. And she said, "Oh, I really miss doing math." And I thought, that was like an interesting thing to say. No, as math teachers, we teach math all day long, but we teach, you know, adding fractions. But everybody who became a math teacher loves math, loves problem solving. And so it's kind of like trying to reignite that in the teachers to kind of bring it forward to the kids. So we've been using some PLC time to work on these problems and some of them are challenging. It's interesting because you're seeing it a little through the student size. Obviously, we have a different skill set. So we work on solving the problems, then we try and create multiple solutions, like what would be another correct solution that a student might provide. We determine what grade level the question would be best used for because we don't want to see, you know, seventh grade. Oh, we did that last year, you know? What prerequisite skills they may need to solve it, how it connects to the current standards. And then how we can scaffold it so we can actually make these problems available to all students. Because we tend to give these problems more to advanced kids, but really, everybody should have access to it. But how do we teach them how to attack a problem like that, giving them an entry point? So right now we're at the preliminary stage where we're kind of encouraging teachers to start using them on a weekly basis. A lot of them are using them. Couple of classrooms I've been in, they'll use them like they'll be on the back wall. And if you're done your work, you know, go grab one, try and finish it by the end of the week. Because they are lengthy problems. I've been using them, I think you use them a little bit too in math lab. We're kind of using them, starting there with those students to see how they tackle them. And one of the last things we notice is the problems have to not always be on current material. They have to target previously learned skills. So this is a problem that I had given to my math lab kids recently. You can read it. I guess I don't need to read it to you. And so I'd broken them up into groups and they started doing the problem and I kind of let them go for a little bit. This problem can easily be solved by writing an algebraic equation. In eighth grade, they start the year with algebraic equations. They've all done algebraic equations. Nobody recognized that that skill could have been used for this problem. There was a lot of guessing and checking, which is a strategy, but it's not very efficient and lots of errors. So after a little while, we were getting to like the frustration point. We kind of regrouped and we talked about, you know, what don't you know? And they said, all right, we don't know how many dimes. I said, well, what could you call that? Oh, well, we could call it a variable, right? And then I said, there's an equal amount. Oh, okay, so it's the same variable. So they were able to come up with the answers, but I had to ask the questions. So that's what we're working on, repeatedly asking those questions to make them start thinking that way. So here's another question we just did recently. It said, "Consider the numbers from one to 1,002 inclusive. What is the difference between the sum of all the even numbers and the sum of all the odd numbers?" Obviously, you would not want to add up all the numbers. You would be there all day. They were not provided with a calculator because I wanted them. I kept saying, oh, they said we need a calculator. I said, no, I need you to create a smaller problem and look for a pattern. So this was a math lab that did this. And so I have two eighth graders' solution that we wanted to play for you, sorry.
Fingers crossed, the video.
I know, the volume's not. And we did one take, so.
Okay. So when you were working on this problem, we had to find the difference between the sum of all the even numbers and the sum of all the odd numbers. What was the first question you asked me to remember what a word meant? Good, and what did that mean?
Closest one, like when you include all the numbers, you put them into numbers and you calculate.
Okay. And so what did you decide you had to do first?
Uh, we decided to find, well, we decided in the following, we knew what the difference meant. Like we knew the difference between subtraction and that sum and addition. So we, yeah, I had a number of the evens and the odds from one through 10. So we found all the evens there from one through 10 and then added them. And then from all the.
What'd you get?
Oh, we got, um, sorry. Well, that was the difference, yeah. We got 30. And then we added all the odds and we got 25.
Yep.
And then we subtracted 30 and 25 and then we got five.
Good, and what did you then do next?
We, 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 and then we did the exact same thing. We added and then what did we get?
The difference, okay. And then what did you, what did you come to a conclusion or what did you try next?
Oh, well, we started to notice a pattern.
Okay.
And then we tried the same thing with one through 30 and we got the difference of.
Before you did that though, didn't you notice that one through 30, there was a mistake? a mistake?
Yeah, we were doing it, we got like, completely different numbers.
What did you expect it to be?
Fifteen.
Okay, why did you expect it to be fifteen?
Because there's a pattern, from five to ten, and then we thought it was supposed to be fifteen.
Okay, and so then what did you do next, when you realized you were adding thirty incorrectly?
Um, we do know by the way of adding and like compares to, uh, for example, we did like two, uh, two, uh, uh, this problem, that was like seven times thirty-two, and then moved the, uh, add the one in the middle, sixteen, so the formula was thirty, two top second was sixteen, one two forty.
Good, okay, and so then when did you notice about the difference of the first, what did you, thirty numbers?
Oh, there was two.
Okay, and then how did you use that to figure out the actual answer to the problem?
Well, we like, a little further, we, we thought about different numbers, so we did like one through a hundred and thought.
What was the difference of one through a hundred, Dave?
Fifty.
Okay, of the even and the odds?
Yeah, well, uh, I, we noticed that, uh, like one through ten is five, so every time it's a half of the number.
Good.
One through twenty is ten, one through thirty is fifteen, and then we know, and then we just divided one thousand and two, and what's in the answer is five hundred and one, because it's half of the.
Great job. What made this problems very hard when you first read it?
We thought we had like, make a list of all the odd numbers and even numbers, yeah, we thought we had to make a list of like, uh, small ones, you can, well, right.
Okay, and how did you make the problem a little bit easier?
We like found out the smaller numbers, first of all, one through ten, we wanted to find them, one through thirty, we did that, we did like a smaller one for like, we did some.
Great, great job, thanks.
So what you didn't see was that actually forty minutes. So that was a three-minute recap, but no, they did an excellent job, there were nine students in the math lab, and everybody got it by the end, some took a little longer, and everybody worked in twos and threes, so I was able to like get around and kind of, you know, if I saw them going in the wrong direction, kind of ask some questions to lead them back. But we have a tendency to only sometimes give problems like this to, you know, accelerated classes, and we're seeing like with MCAS questions, that they're a little bit more complex, and the kids don't seem to understand where to go if the skills aren't explicitly stated. So that's kind of what, something we're working on developing, is giving access to all the kids, to these types of questions.
So, as a nice transition out of that video, so as you saw in the video, we're trying to work on these skills with all of our students, and a big piece of our work is with our special education population. We work directly with our special education teachers, we model math instruction in the academic support classes to help them get a better sense of how they can support their students. We provide specific math intervention for students in those classes as well. But the big piece that we're really working on to try and support our special education teachers is looking at the vertical alignment, to give them a sense of what are these previously learned skills that students should have in order to be successful with what they're currently doing. So for example, this is for eighth grade right now, this is what they're currently working on, graphing linear equations and slope of a line, and you can see all the different prerequisites that come with those skills and things that students really need to be confident with and recognize when they need to use them. A big one, plotting points in the coordinate plane. They've been seeing elements of that since third grade, but some students still just aren't confident with it, especially as we add more and more pieces, they started in just a single quadrant, and then we build it to add in those positive and negative numbers that they're having to deal with. So making sure that they're confident with those skills, but also giving our special education teachers the knowledge of what math skills really will support these students as they try to work through these new skills that they're learning. And then, on the other end, we're also working to improve what we're doing for our high-achieving students, what we're doing to offer enrichment. So right now, we gave the algebra readiness exam that we had developed with Dave Pesegio from the high school to get a sense of where our seventh graders from last year were at in terms of their readiness for an algebra curriculum. What we found from the results is that the number of students identified at each of the schools didn't warrant a full course offering of an algebra option, but we did have enough that we really did want to make sure we were providing good enrichment opportunities for these students. So we're starting small, but looking to expand as we go forward. We're using extensions block to offer enrichment and having students work in these, you know, ability groups with students who are at a similar ability level to themselves, to get them to engage with more challenging, higher-level problem-solving opportunities to really hone in their skills and have opportunities to experience more challenging math that they're ready for, that they're interested in, that they're motivated to work with. So this is a problem that I started my particular group with, and I just, I gave them a sense of what it was that I wanted from them in terms of working together, talking about ideas and strategies, and not just, you know, taking it themselves and focusing on the problem, but really working with each other to work through it. And between two extension block periods, they took this problem, they ran with it, they had some fun with it, and they came up with two, the two solutions for it, and were able to really explain it. I gave them no instruction on this, they used what they know already to work through it. They ran into areas of difficulty and were able to support each other to shift their thinking, especially when they were developing the algebraic expressions to represent the rules that they had developed, really talking through, there was such good conversation that came from it. So it was a nice opportunity to really see them showcase their abilities and to showcase their love for the subject of math and what they're doing with it. So, I'll leave that up there for you. So that, that's a little summary of what, what's going on at the middle schools in terms of math right now, so. Any questions?
Are there questions for Jill or Julie?
It's great, it's exciting.
Great, yeah. Lot happening.
Yeah. Dr. Goff?
It's just as Julie mentioned, you know, the, the students that took, you know, forty-five minutes, and I, I liked the, what you said about, you know, access for all.
Yes.
You're, you're doing it in a different form, but with the, the students that need more enrichment, you're doing it with this group in your math lab, and I think that's what we need to do is have this stick-with-it mindset of not giving up, because I think when they do that and they work through that and they, and they grapple with it, but then they get it, it just continues that, that engagement moving forward. So I, I really think that's important and to have that perseverance, so it's really nice to see you both doing that.
They are getting faster, like.
To get them.
Yeah, they're getting faster, like first they wouldn't complete it in a period, and so that's the hope, if we keep asking questions and modeling how to ask questions, then I hope is, okay, now they're in a group, they'll ask each other the questions, then they're sitting there individually on a test, maybe they'll ask those questions internally, but it's a slow process, obviously.
But you're sticking with it.
Right, and half the battle with that population is getting past the lack of confidence that they have, working on developing these skills so that they build that confidence to be able to do them.
Carrie. Thank you for this, that was such a thorough explanation, I think in particular of how you were analyzing the MCAS questions and seeing where the breakdown was happening, I think is super important. This is for my own edification, I just want to make sure I understand the course offerings. So you're saying there's no algebra course offering in eighth grade currently?
Right.
So is there any ability grouping in math, or are all, other than math lab, or?
Uh, no, so in every grade, we have two levels, so we have an accelerated level and an on level.
Okay.
So they take the same course, it's the same standards, it's just that you go a little deeper and you go, and it might be, the pace might be a little quicker, but it's supposed to be more in-depth versus a different course.
Do you see much movement within a school year or within a child's middle school career? Let's say they started off on level, but the teacher noticed that they might be ready to go deeper?
Not usually within the year.
Right.
I mean, there are exceptions, obviously, that it has come up, but I feel like that's more of an isolated situation. Years ago, we used to do like a different course, so if you were in above level or an accelerated class, we're taking a different course than you were in on level, and that did make it hard for children to move, like if they were struggling. This has allowed them to be able to move more, I would say move up than down, but yeah, we do see it.
And definitely year to year, there's definitely a little shift, it may not be massive, but you know, a few students going from one level to the other.
And how is it determined for an incoming sixth grader whether they're, they're placed in on level or accelerated? Is it just a fifth grade teacher recommendation, or is?
And there's a test.
So we have, yeah, we, we have a, we actually worked really closely with the two math coaches last year to work on making sure that we had a good process in place, so that it was common across the district in terms of what was looked at, and it's very comparable to what we look at at the middle school level too, in terms of, you know, MCAS results and student performance and teacher recommendation. They developed a placement assessment that students take in May, just to gauge, and we pushed them a little bit, so it's not just straight fifth grade skills, there are some areas where they would, it would be very clear that the student was at a higher level within that assessment. So we have a variety of data points that we consider in terms of the placements.
You've sort of pinpointed what was behind my question, which is, I think, having standard common assessments in terms of making recommendations of levels is imperative, because we want to make sure that every student has an equal opportunity to reach that highest level course if they're ready for it, and also we want to be looking at whether or not any particular subgroups of students are under or overrepresented, not just in the accelerated course, but also math lab or what have you, so I really appreciate you taking the time to explain that to me. Thank you very much, and thank you for all of this.
I have a couple of thoughts. I think so many points that you made are so on target, it's just exciting to hear that, you know, that, that, this is going on in our, in our classrooms now. You talked about the math lab and interventions. Do you do the math lab and the interventions, or are you teaching the other teachers how to do it too?
So it's a mix of both.
Okay.
We do teach the, the math labs, that's considered, what's it, considered a tier-two intervention, a little bit beyond. What we do with the teachers is work on developing strategies at a tier-one level that they can be doing in the classrooms for these students.
So like when you were talking about the iReady and that sort of stuff, the teachers are learning how to take that information, and a, a student that would be in the, your math lab is also in another math class, correct?
Yep.
So they would be getting that ideally from, from two angles.
Yeah, what we do in math lab doesn't necessarily mirror what they're exactly doing in class, like a lot of what we're doing is filling in the gaps.
Yep.
Of older skills. So something you just asked.
Did you guys speak to the PD at the beginning of the year concerning iReady?
Sure, yeah, we had, we actually had a person from iReady come in and offer PD for, they offered two different sessions, they offered a little bit more in-depth session for us and a few other people, reading teachers, special education teachers, in terms of really diving deep into all of the data and all of the components, because we're using a little bit more of it than the classroom teachers, and then we had a second session that piggybacked on that for all of our math teachers from both middle schools to participate, and they had an opportunity to experience the assessment that the students are taking and work through some of the questions to get a feel of what the students are doing when they're doing that, and also all the resources that they have access to and the data that they have access to for their individual classes. So they can see the students that they have where we can see all of the students.
Okay.
Focuses in on theirs specifically.
And speaking about one of the interventions that you were talking about, like for example, today, I was in two different academic support classes, and so one of them, I happened to work with two students, it was like an intervention-based, the teacher asked me, you know, they're behind in these skills, can you sit and work with them, so I did that. That was in like a sixth grade class and then an eighth grade class, the teacher said, could you model a lesson? And so I went in and I kind of broke down, like she had said they're having trouble with like fractional coefficients, so we kind of broke down the problem and the hope was modeling it for the teacher, so then when I leave, then she can do the same thing the next time. So there are both interventions happening?
That's great, I'm, I'm very excited about what you were talking about, you're doing a great job. Couple more things, the extensions.
Yep.
Do kids opt into that? So, so did you get a fair number of the kids you were hoping to get to sign up for, for the math, sort of extra math?
So for this first go at it, I took the population that we had identified as, you know, high-achieving on that readiness exam from the spring, so in, on my end, that was six students, and I put it out to them, I actually surveyed them to find a day that would work for them, because many of them are involved in multiple things and have extensions for eighth grade leaders and drama and all these other activities that they're involved in. So we found a day, and four of the six opted to take it on, so you know, I was pleased with that, and when the next extension round rolls up, rolls in, I would love to expand the group that it's open to, so.
And we're on a slightly different schedule, so we haven't rolled out our second extension yet, so we're working on getting the kids signed up now, so.
Okay, it's good stuff, it's great, thank you.
Yes.
Any other thoughts or questions? Okay, we're good, thank you, very much.
And your colleague, your middle, what, what loyalty, your middle.
I know.
That is very impressive.
That was kindness, you guys, you showed kindness.
Extra credit.
Okay, that gets us to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. A lot of communication and collaboration these past eleven days since the last school committee meeting. Nancy Gallivan and I attended the MASC, this Massachusetts Association of School Committee and the MASSS, which is the Massachusetts Association of Superintendent's Conference on November seventh and eighth, and like I mentioned before, this is the largest annual gathering of education, educational leaders in Massachusetts, and it really consisted of this conference of diverse professional development opportunities and really in-depth discussion about our critical educational issues of today. But most importantly, it really afforded us the opportunity to collaborate and network with superintendents across the state and school committees across the state, and then also allowed Nancy and I to have some actual time to, you know, take a breath and collaborate and, and talk about issues in our, in our district and how we can always strive to improve. So I really, I, I look forward to that conference, and it's, it's extremely beneficial to, to bring back some ideas, but then also to have the time to brainstorm, which we, you know, we get caught up in, in the hectic hours of the day. Nancy, I don't know if you have anything to add before I go on about the, the conference?
It was a great conference, and we're all members of MASC, so you guys can go on their website, and I believe that a lot of the, the PowerPoints and things like that are posted there, but I sent just this evening my notes to everybody, and you, like you can tell, like I was taking good notes on Wednesday and Thursday, and by Friday, I was getting tired of taking notes, so it doesn't give you the full snapshot, but there were, there were just some really good things to, to think about there. I went to one on community engagement where the town of Mashpee was talking about how they, they had an idea that worked similar to what the town of Westboro is doing. There, there was an open vacant storefront in town, and they worked to deal with the landlord, in one case, it's their special education students who are in the eighteen to twenty-two-year-old bracket, who are selling, they're selling candy and swag from their town, but it, it gives them a presence in the community. In the other case, they, in Mashpee, they're, they're doing like art shows and music performances, so it, it, it just gave me some ideas, but I was sitting next to this school committee member from Westboro who, at one point, we had to pair up and do things, and you know how sometimes you have a partner who looks like, don't even talk to me, he just looked grumpy to me. He was so nice once we started talking, because he wanted me to know about this project that's going in Westboro that I had to look into, and so, you know, it's, it's something that, we're always looking for ways to engage with the community, that I, and I thought that was good. There was a great session on community engagement, using, the, the speaker was somebody who had worked for the Boston Public Schools for a long time, and he, he was talking about branding and started with the idea of, it, it's not about using social media, it's about, it's about being much more thoughtful and starting with developing what you're and starting with developing what your message is. And the notes are all there for you guys to look at at some point, but I would suggest looking at it because it's some of the things that we've started talking about. And specific to that one, there was a conversation within the group of people that were there because at one point he was talking about social media. And the, what would it be? The district attorney, I guess, in Middlesex County is extremely vigilant about the open meeting law. And so some people from Holliston, it was, some school committee members were saying, you have to be really, really careful if you're a school committee member who has a Facebook page, because without trying to do it, you can be violating the open meeting law by having serial conversations. It's something worth looking into. Because one of the women said, oh, don't worry about it. I block my fellow school committee members from my Facebook page because I don't want to be in violation. And the people from Holliston were saying, that's not good enough. So it just alerted me, not being a Facebook person, it just alerted me to the fact that it's something we should probably understand a little bit better. There were just, there were so many things. I don't want to tell you about every single one of them, but I went to one on student health and wellness. And the superintendent in Norton is part of a group of superintendents that is working on trying to develop an adaptable, age-appropriate vaping curriculum, because everybody's concerned about vaping, and they're hoping to do it within this school year. So they were looking for a school committee rep, and I raised my hand on that one because I just feel like that it's really worth putting some time in. Beth and I, the other day, went to the first meeting of the sheriff. And that was interesting, too. But one of the things that came up at that meeting was, there is the potential for some money to be coming down the pike if our Attorney General in Massachusetts gets the drug companies to have to pay up because of some of the false advertising that they've done. Anyway, that's kind of a stay tuned thing, but I think it would be great if we could get some vaping curriculum into our classrooms, because, you know, you want to stop kids before they get started. There was a couple of very good sessions on diversity and hiring diverse staff. One of the things that came strongly at me was, don't think of it, don't think of diversity as black students and white students. Diversity, we're all diverse in terms of race, religion, age, sexual orientation. So when you talk about having a diverse staff, it's way more than black and white. And the main speaker, the keynote speaker on Friday, was very good, and I gave you his website there. So there's a lot of good information there. It's worth taking a look at.
Yeah, I thought it was, it was even better than the year before. I thought, they're just bringing a lot to the table and more able to get more out of it, so I really commend them for that. Speaking of commendations, I just wanted to commend the Wapo High School drama, the cast, the crew, the musicians, on their performance of the 25th Annual Countum Putnam Spelling Bee. I was able to attend Sunday. There were also some surprise cameos and appearances. I think Bill Buckley was one evening, and Dr. Kenny was in there on Sunday. And I think she thought at first that she was going to get up and be up there for about two minutes, and she was up there through about a couple of songs, with the choreography and all. So it was great. And I was able to meet with the actors Wednesday to congratulate them and have some discussion about their performance as well. So job, job well done. I met with the Wapo High School and Johnson Middle School Student Councils. Next week, I'll be meeting with the BART Student Council and then also the Wapo High School MEKO students. It was great to just kind of, just again, listen and learn and pick their brains. You know, they talked about, you know, what makes their school great, what they like about their school. We talked about improvements of the school, and it was really interesting that they really value the programs that are offered. You know, the high school talked a lot about film festival, robotics, and the different programs, the things that hook the kids and get them, students, and get them in. And it was really interesting in talking to both of them, what they said first and foremost, what they like about this school, with their teachers. And, you know, I asked them to explain a little bit more, and we talked about that, and even one Johnson student said, "Relatable. Relatable. I can go to my teacher when I need to." So it was fantastic talking, speaking with them. Yesterday, I had a very productive meeting with the middle school and high school PAC chairs. Elementarys will be to follow. They really have such passion and dedication to our school system, and their continued partnership is greatly appreciated. And again, that's part of my entry plan, of just listening and learning to all levels. Monday night, I attended Action Together. Some of you may be familiar with that, with the group. They consist of parents and community members in Wapo. I also would like to thank them. They donate some school supplies. They dropped those off with Mary Mortali, and we're distributing those to the schools of just generic school supplies of people who are in need and people who even register that, you know, may come with nothing and need a little bit of a helping hand. So I thank them. We talked about spark kindness. They're interested in joining in a community effort to help build a kinder, more connective and inclusive community. And some of them are also interested in volunteering their time to become literacy volunteers. We talked about the Adult Ed program, and I think we have...
Yep, December 3rd is going to be our first class, so signups will go out tomorrow. And that was discussed at last night's LPAC meeting.
Yeah, that's great. So we have a teacher, and then Bill's continuing to work with the Wapo Public Library on working with the volunteer program. So things are looking good. Yesterday evening, I was able to attend the Senior Citizens Fall Social Dinner, and that was hosted by the Wapo School Nutrition Department in HESCO. And Mary Mortali's also in attendance, helping out to serve and work with our seniors. And next month, this is new to the Council on Aging, but they have an educator networking group. So a group of retired educators that get together and meet monthly. So I asked if they, I talked to Carrie McMinnon and asked if she would mind if I would join, and she said that would be great. So I'll be joining that group and talking to them as well. A little bit better there, Mr. Hahn with Walk with the Supers?
Yeah, a little bit.
It's increasing and a great group, and it's just, it's a really nice time to listen to people's conversations, to hear great things about the district and even recommendations they can make. Some graduating senior parents talking about, you know, what the school system has provided them throughout the years, and then also asking, you know, what more can we do? And picking their brain again a bit, so it was, it was a great walk. And I think we got in about three and a half miles that day. Some of us got in three and a half miles. Some of us may have walked a little slower, but we're okay, right? Bill Buckley showed up a little bit, too, so we got that in. So it was a great, great Friday. I'm continuing with school visits and meeting with the principals, and we also visited Kennedy Middle School. Talk about that when we get to the MSBA, their construction and their design in Natick. And then hopefully, people were able to get and read my quarterly newsletter that went out in early November. So that was just to give some district highlights and events that are taking place across the schools, and I'm hoping to get another one out probably in late winter. So we'll do that every quarter. So we'll continue to do that. And as Darcy mentioned, next week, we've got Thanksgiving, early release day on the 27th, no school on the 28th and 29th. I also just finally, I just want to publicly thank Robyn Schappel. She's our Health Director, and she's retiring. She had a little bit of a surprise retirement celebration this afternoon, and everything that she's done for the town of Wapo and for our schools. Her collaborative partnership has been absolutely amazing. Her energy, her enthusiasm, her dedication is still the same today as when I met her, you know, over 20 years ago. And I think she's been working for the district, I think, 32 years.
Something amazing like that, yes.
We have mentioned, she, you know, will, she just did so much for our school system. And I know Melissa Renary will be picking up where she left off, so we have a great replacement for her. But I just want to publicly thank her for her service.
That's great. Any questions for Dr. Goff? Okay, then that gets us to subcommittees. Oh, sorry, MSBA, I forgot that.
Just briefly, MSBA update is part of our journey to visit some middle schools. We attended the Kennedy Middle School in Natick. We toured. This was the construction site, I think it was with Mike Frishan, Nancy, myself, Patrick Shield, and Jim Johnson. And we really were able to look at the design. They showed us around, pointed out some of the, also the non-construction thinking that goes in, the phasing, the access. I don't know if you have any comments about going up and visiting a building that just started to be constructed?
What was nice about that one was, it was, it's similar in size to what we're proposing. The needs are similar. It is probably a year into construction, so like the structure of the building is there, but it felt like we were walking up scaffolding, which wasn't my favorite part. But it was, you know, it was very, very interesting to see their architectural design, to, you know, talk to some people who were just very willing to share what they think priorities need to be. And it's helpful. At this point, we've, a variety of people have seen a variety of different buildings, and I think that in the future, we're going to set up a chance for the School Building Committee to go and see some of these sites. And we'll let you guys know, too, if you're not on the School Building Committee, because anybody who wants to come at that point, you know, I think it's, we're going to work as a school committee sort of in parallel to what the School Building Committee is going to do, but it's helpful.
And as an educator, it was interesting to see how they could build a school, a new school, on the same site as the existing school while the school is in session? And to see what they had to do and the changes they had to make so they could successfully continue the children's education while they were physically building another school. So I thought that was interesting, being able to ask questions. The School Building Committee, School Building Meeting, Committee Meeting met last Tuesday, and during that time, we reiterated that, that in October, that Wapo was formally accepted into the MSA feasibility study, and that we also reviewed requirements, timelines, and deliverables as it relates to the operating project manager. And that includes the formation of OPM Selection Committee and authorizing the request for services to be published and advertised. The committee was also provided with dates for future School Bill Committee meetings all the way through the summer.
Any questions for Dr. Goff? Okay, that gets us to subcommittees now.
Right. So we had a policy subcommittee meeting, which we reviewed some of our policies. We took a look at the field trips, making sure those policies and procedures were up to date. We looked at, you know, just some of our health services and taking a look at anything that was coming down the pike for those policies, different policies in the subcommittees. And I know, I think, anything that was legislative?
The Student Opportunity Act got passed by both the House and the Senate yesterday. Yeah. And it's, so it's sent to the governor's desk. Chances are, from what I'm hearing, the governor, it's maybe not exactly the way he would have done it, but I, the expectation is the governor's going to sign that possibly before Thanksgiving. So that's a, that's a good step in the right direction. Yeah, a lot of work. And that's it. Any other subcommittees? Okay, then that gets us to Citizens Comment. It's your chance to comment. Okay, then that gets us to approvals of warrants, donations, and minutes. Carrie?
Okay. I will make a motion to approve the following payroll warrant from October 31st, number 2018PA, for the amount listed in your packets.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. DiNizio, second by Mr. Breen. All those in favor, opposed, abstained, 500.
I'll make a motion to accept the following accounts payable warrants from November 7th, number 220019, and from November 14th, number 220020, for the amounts listed in your packets.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. DiNizio, a second by Mrs. Muccini. Any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, abstained, 500. And there are no donations, but we do have minutes. Somebody want to take those?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from the MSBA Subcommittee Meeting of November 4th.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. DiNizio, a second by Mrs. Muccini. All those in favor, opposed, abstained, 500.
And I'll make a motion to accept the School Committee Meeting Minutes from November 5th.
Again, we have a motion by Mrs. DiNizio, a second by Mrs. Muccini. All those in favor, opposed, abstained, 500.
And lastly, a motion to accept the Policy Subcommittee Meeting Minutes from November 14th.
We have a motion by Mrs. DiNizio, a second by Mrs. Gayotz. All those in favor, opposed, abstained, 500. Great. Well, that gets us to the end of our meeting, but make sure, we just want to make sure that everybody knows that we wish you a happy Thanksgiving, and we're thankful for all the hard work that's going on in our district, because there's a lot of good stuff going on. Mr. Breen?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor, opposed, abstained. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.